So I'm gonna call to order the Dover Sherburne Reedville School Committee meeting for February 4th, 2020 at 6:30. Just to note that Lynn Collins is not here today because she is off at the girls' basketball game, they're playing Hopkinton, they're eight and seven. So, go Raiders. And first, are there any community comments? Hearing none, we're gonna move on. I'm just gonna make a quick change to the agenda. I'm gonna move the consent agenda up because one of the things we're voting on is field trips, and Janee's been gracious enough to come. Do you wanna say anything about?
It's just that this is a field trip for, you know, it's basically, it's science-based and it's my wheelhouse because I studied marine science when I was in college and I started the marine science course here 14 years ago. My favorite class to teach, I make no secret of telling students that all the time, I love teaching that class. But it is the same field trip that Anita Laddi has done two years ago and then two years prior, I'm sorry, last year and two years prior to that. And it was really awesome, the kids loved it. I've already got kids asking if they're gonna, asking her and asking other science teachers, like, are they gonna do that again? And before I started the marine science class, I actually went on an Earthwatch trip, so this is with a through Earthwatch, and it's Aluthra, which is using the facilities of the island school in Aluthra. So it's kind of an idyllic setting for doing research, and it's all research. I mean, you're actually helping the scientists. And many years ago, I went on an Earthwatch expedition just as a teacher. I was taking students, but just as a teacher volunteer. And I spent the entire week super diving and collecting data for a fish biologist in Barbados, and it was fabulous. My brother also did an Earthwatch trip in New Zealand a few years after that and was helping a researcher study dolphins and the dolphin migrations past on the South Island in New Zealand. So I have had past experience with Earthwatch, and I know that Anita has had great experience with them as well. I've already been talking to some of the coordinators there, but it's exactly the same trip, it's the same research, this research that's ongoing, you know, just sort of monitoring these populations and the habitats that they use. So it's really like hands-on research, and I'm really, really excited about it because it's totally what I love to do. Asking for permission to take 10 lucky students with me to go snorkeling for a week in the wild. I know.
What is the eligibility criteria for students participating?
Right now, I'm just, yeah, eagerness, honestly, yeah.
We typically give upperclassmen sort of first nod at it just because of the opportunities that, you know, maybe it comes around again. But we do try to open it, you know, up, but obviously, we have to maintain certain numbers for the program that they want us to maintain.
And so then if it's oversubscribed, you look to the students who have kind of their, I guess, the academic prerequisites first?
Well, we would certainly look at that, but we would first and foremost give juniors and seniors the priority with the assumption that there would be other students who'd have that opportunity. And then we have different trips, but it has always been something we've been able to work out.
And it used to be, I saw in Reddit, it was 15 and now it's 10, is that their request or is that our?
I think it's their request because it's just in terms of like how many you can really feasibly put on a boat, because literally all day, like, we're out on a boat at the research site, so it's really just sort of the logistics about it, and it's just a lot easier. And also forgetting there, you kinda have to take a puddle jumper because Aluthra is kind of a teeny tiny little island, so you kinda have to take a puddle jumper, kind of thing, so, yeah. It's more logistic aspects.
Yeah, I have to say, my daughter did that three, the first one?
The first in 2015, 2017?
27?
I think so.
Yeah?
Sounds right, 2017.
Yeah, and it was, it was like life-changing, so I'm all in favor of that. Anybody else have any other questions? Okay, so let's, we need to vote to approve the minutes from January 7th, approve the Aluthra trip, and also the Epic Global Leadership Program, it's one of the Tufts.
Is that for next year?
The Tufts would be for this year.
For this year, okay.
And the Sea Turtles is for next year?
Yeah, next February.
Can I hear a motion? Discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. And thank you and to the other teachers for doing this. I mean, you're taking up your vacation time to take these kids on this amazing opportunity, so I appreciate it.
And I wanna add since we're, you know, a big thank you to you and also to the teachers who do the Tufts program, which I think is at least Mr. O'Heagan, maybe others, because that again, similarly is a weekend, and I know it's very impactful for the students who participate. And they're really grateful to all of you who donate so much of your time to do extra things.
Yes, thank you. All right, we'll get back to the agenda, and we'll do reports. Don, you wanna mention the warrant or?
So the warrant report is in your package or your portfolio?
All right, let's go to Wyatt.
Yeah, so basically, my emphasis for today is our town meetings with the junior, sophomore, and freshman classes that we had last Wednesday. And Mr. Hickey, our advisor, said we had very productive meetings. And basically, in the town meetings, we open the floor to all students in our grade, juniors went first, and then sophomores and then freshmen in different periods, and we get to hear suggestions from anybody that wants to voice themselves. And we've had some, we had some really good ideas, and many, and some included the different Wi-Fi systems for each grade, for each of the grades. Many people had questions regarding schedules, like Xbox, et cetera, and the people seemed very involved. And then another suggestion that was taken pretty well was if anyone has a very good grade, should they have to take mid-years too? So we get a lot of very insightful discussion that we can deal with, and then we will bring it to Mr. Smith. He knows about our meetings, and they've been very productive in the past. Later on in the year, when we cut down our lists, so I don't know when that date will be, but we'll have that soon. And then, so that's about the town meetings. And then our Red Cross blood drive is coming up soon, and we'll get, I'll have more on that next meeting, but that's all for Soon Council now.
Curious, when students, you said there were lots of questions about the changing schedules, it's one of the things that's on our docket to discuss tonight, what, just your observations or, you know, just things that you've noticed, what are things that are exciting to students about it, or maybe what are some concerns or questions?
So everybody always has a question about Xbox and like how that's gonna work out, but other than Xbox, people like to talk about the sports and how their after-school schedules will change, and many of which are questions I've been hearing or concerns I've been hearing in these meetings too. So it seems like the students will get a lot of information pretty soon when the, either the new schedule like gets finalized or, because it seems that all the questions the students have seem very relevant in the what's going on right here, so, yeah.
Can I ask, when you do this town meeting, is it a chance for discussion amongst students, or is it you just sort of ask the questions and then you will have discuss at a later date?
Yeah, I'd say students volunteer just to not, I wouldn't say it's as much discussion as it is suggestions by the students. I would say that students have suggestions that build off of other peoples, so that's good, but there isn't really like student discussion amongst each other during the meetings.
You good? All right, thank you as always, we really appreciate it. All right, John?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Hovey. So I've included my monthly report, which I'm happy to answer any questions, but I know that the primary reason for questions and answers will be in relation to the new schedule. So Wyatt, if you wanna hear, stick around for a couple minutes, this might be great. First, what I wanna say?
Just before you get to the new schedule thing, can I find out if people have questions?
Oh, yes, sure, of course.
Are you diving into the schedule?
I was going to, yes.
Okay, do people have questions, anything, or I do, because I always do?
I have, I have just a quick one. I mean, what I wanted to say is particularly looking at the curriculum update, I just wanted to make note, there was quite a lengthy one from the English department. I wanted to give them some positive feedback that it does, I can see a lot of the things that have been being worked on in terms of, you know, being innovative, being thoughtful, and changing things up were evident in that report, and I just wanted to say thank you to them. I think that incorporating reading, as a person who's a reading specialist by trade, I really think that's a positive part of the curriculum, and I've been really happy to see the use of some more sort of culturally responsive texts and more critical thinking texts being used, so thank you.
Thank you. And just as a follow-up, different departments will be presenting information in subsequent reports. So next month, I'll have a different department, we'll keep rotating them through so that you can be hearing about different things taking place in each of the departments.
That's awesome, I appreciate that, thank you. And thank the department, it's cool putting that together for us. I'd like to just sort of add to your events, that the Chocolate Cafe is this Sunday, February 9th, from 2:00 to 4:00 in Lindquist, and that's a great community event. I don't, in some years, there's an elementary school singing thing, but it's always middle school and high school.
I think fifth grade bumps up for the jazz.
Oh, Janice, yeah.
Eleven, three, that's where elementary schools would be there.
See, it's awesome, so it's a great district-wide event. And then?
Really good chocolate.
Oh my goodness, do you happen to know the high school play festival, what the play is?
Yes, it's, I think it's called Autumn Leaf. I know that the storyline involves, I do know the storyline, involves a young girl and her grandmother, and it's sort of told, it's a story, like a bit of a fable about this young girl, it takes place in 1911, and she goes off into the woods and comes back telling her grandmother that she had conversations with her grandfather, who has since passed, and it's a way to sort of continue to bring them together and have communication, and she talks about the elements of nature and how it brings them together. The name is escaping me right now, but I do know that that's what it's about because Carmel and I always preview it, and I think it's gonna be great. You looking it up, Janice?
Yeah, give me a few minutes.
But I do know the storyline, and it actually sounds, it sounds really very, very warm and family-oriented, and, you know, it certainly has some mystical aspects of it. I don't know if you've ever seen or read the book Big Fish, where there's a little bit of the exaggeration piece, and I think this young girl goes out and she starts exaggerating a little bit just to sort of bring some closure and some happiness to her grandmother, who is obviously quite sad that she has lost her loved one.
Title TBD.
TBD, thanks. Did anybody have any questions about the class size, is there anything? I would just like to say, I thought that was really, the class size information was really interesting, and I'm wondering if, I feel like that sort of would be helpful as part of the program of studies discussion sometimes. Is there any way to get this data potentially early or is part of that?
Yes, it is, yeah, we can do that. Yeah, and I wanna thank Ann Keegan, Assistant Headmaster, who was responsible for putting that together, because as many of you know, having children in the school, we have many different sections, some are combined, some are not, so it's not just a matter of spitting out a report, you actually have to go in and take our honors sections, our CP section, some of our combined classes, and you have to then bring them together because otherwise, you know, it's a crazy puzzle, and Ann did a fantastic job of putting that together. So yes, we can definitely have that to you earlier.
So I guess that leads to a question I have, did you have another question about it?
No, that was.
Which is, when I'm looking at that report and say it says honors, English, and I don't have it in front of me right now, but has a range of five to 20 children, and CP English has a range of seven to 21 children. Is it fair to assume that some of those courses, that say five or seven, might be a combined course that has like 12 kids in it, and some of them are honors and some are not? Or was that broken down?
No, some of those were broken down. Yeah, yep, some of those were in fact broken down.
What they are, and people need to keep in mind, is that because, just like we have this conversation, it seems monthly at the elementary level, both towns, because we run small numbers of sections, and we have such a small school, it's really difficult when you have specialties like, you know this, like band or orchestra, the general public probably does not know this, if you have these singletons out there, maybe only running one section of AP Chem, those kids have to be slotted in where we can find them, and frequently, we can't find the typical kind of average class size section, and that's why you might see some of those outliers.
I mean, I think there's that, I think when I look at the way that you guys have scheduled and that concept of combining in honors and a CP class, you know, when it's appropriate, to do that is a really efficient and thoughtful way to do it, I think it also builds a more integrated student body of letting kids interact with kids that are at a different level than they are, I think that's really positive. And I also think it's an important report because, you know, if you're a family and your child comes home and is like, oh, all my classes have 24 kids in them, and somebody else, well, my kids have 12, well, that is a factor of scheduling, right? Because if a kid is taking a particular language, or they really want marine bio, and it's only offered this one period, well, now they have to go into the bigger class, and you guys are accommodating that. And I think that that, being transparent about that, and that it's really a feature of how we get kids to classes they want and need, is, and sometimes that does come out with slightly lopsided.
Yeah, yeah, it does, and you know.
Something you can do about that.
No, but just so that the school committee knows too, we also, when that report is then generated, we don't just stop there. The guidance counselors and assistant headmaster also then sit down and look to see where can we balance, where can we make those changes, and what ultimately we come up against are some of those singletons that Dr. Kewell talked about. Is there room for efficiency? Yes, there always is, right? And that's what we'll be looking at, and we've even got a couple ideas for some things that we can do creatively going into next year. But there are some cases where we would love it to be 18 and 18, it just doesn't turn out to be that way because it's opposite another singleton that we wanna ensure that we run and that we have kids in.
That's a really important point, because if you think about, I think about when my own children were coming through, the real special thing for families when they think about Dover Sherburne is in fact that we're able to run small schools, small classes, and I think we all have seen the benefits to our kids. And having been in systems where you can't do that, I think there is a noticeable difference. I think we try to, as John said, you know, be efficient where we can be efficient, but also without shifting the culture, the kind of counted-on culture. It's, again, it's the same thing that we were dealing with last year, Kate, you were there, and Michael at Dover. Dover and Sherburne have the same problems where they run, well, we run three sections of kindergarten or four sections. If we run four sections, we'll be up against the cap on the guideline. If we run three, no, if we run three, we'll be up against, if we run four, we'll be almost beneath it. It's just like this constant struggle for us. And having been in a system where we would have potentially 10 sections of, or 12 sections of ninth grade English, that gives you so much more flexibility and multiple sections of chorus, or it's, we just don't, we don't have that luxury. It's been a bit of a shock for me to see as a former principal, now the superintendent, it's very different in scheduling, and I know Ann has spent a lot of time on it, and with Aspen, and who do you work with on that, Ann?
Rob Williams, it was something, I was talking about co-schedules, yeah.
That is a thankless job, but thank you for doing it.
A follow-up, compound question. One is, do you see tech and virtual high school kind of giving you more flexibility in coming years with being able to maybe alleviate some of the schedule pressures? And I guess related to that, are you hearing back from colleges that there is more of the virtual classes that are a part of their regular offering? So that almost might be a benefit to have a little bit of that for high school students because they're gonna be seeing it in college?
That's correct, and the answer is yes to both. So yes, virtual high school has alleviated some of that, it's actually given some of our juniors and seniors some greater flexibility. We have a number of kids who are very interested in entrepreneurship, some of the business courses that we don't necessarily offer, yet they're able to go into those, a couple of the science electives, a language elective, so that has helped that piece. And then as we continue to add some of our computer science and our, some of our other technology electives, that will also create some of that flexibility. And when I talk about the schedule tonight, we have another potential option of looking at music and concert band in a way that we can incorporate that while giving greater flexibility to the overall schedule. And yes, on the college piece, and in fact, I was telling Ms. McCoy and Dr. Kewell today, I'm engaged in a program now, and it's an online program that has a lot of these interface and communication, yet I also have to respond to other people in my cohort, and I have to respond, and it's a fascinating platform that I'm enjoying, but I'm seeing that, yes, this is gonna become more and more common for our students, especially as they go into undergrad and then graduate school for certain, and then beyond that, that they will start to see more and more blended learning.
I was actually just gonna bring that up, John, I'm glad you did, you're a humble guy, but it's a very cool program, a certification program offered through Harvard Graduate School and Harvard School of Business with people from all over the world, from schools all over the world, and I think it's just actually a real kind of case in point of what we hope for from all our leaders. We ask our teachers to be growth mindset, mindset Ted? We want our teachers to have a growth mindset, and we want our students to leave here with a growth mindset. John is now demonstrating this because he's, he's learning exactly what we're asking his kids to do and going through that process, so I think that's awesome. So kudos to you, John, on that.
Can I just follow up quickly? I also have a quick question on the online courses, talking about being creative and schedule-wise, which is fantastic. I was curious, because I think that it's a fairly new offering for high school students, right, just a couple of years?
For us, yes. Not the program itself.
No, no, for us. Wondering if you have had or going to get any feedback from the students currently taking those classes? And it's my understanding that kids might be in the same online class, but not in the same subject, but not in the same class?
Correct.
And is there a way for them to be able to support each other to be in the same section?
I think that our coordinator, who's Lori Allegherry, I think she can perhaps make that request, but it really depends upon how they fill those slots. So, you know, that's something I could find out if we can do it. I know that they put them into different places. It would certainly be an interesting support system for those students who did wish to do that. And yes, we are intending on gathering survey feedback from students to see how effective it is, what's worked, what hasn't worked. I've actually met with half a dozen kids afterwards just to kind of ask, you know, what worked well, what didn't. But Lori is intending on doing a survey that VHS is happy to coordinate with.
Ultimately, the kids are so savvy about picking their courses, they will vote with their feet. You'll know if it's taken hold here, if, and this was our first year?
Yeah.
If in our second year, which is about a month away, when you start registering for courses, kids are not expressing interest. But it also is a good safety valve for kids who have completed their course registration, then realize that something is not gonna be available to them.
Correct, and then even on the flip side, where we've had a couple students who did sign up and then realized with their own schedule here that it was gonna be too much. You know, there is an ad drop time period where we can still receive our funding back, but there's a little flexibility. They run their registration time periods similar to a college, so their time periods are different, everything is semesterized with the exception of AP courses for them, so they really are accustomed to a full semester array of menu of courses. But yeah, we will, we certainly will be getting feedback. I know one student who said, you know, it was good, I did okay, but it wasn't for me, and that's okay too. And we've had some other students who've said it was great because the topic was just something that they were so excited about, and it's just perhaps a course that we didn't have. Entrepreneurship has really taken off with a number of our kids.
And then do, I know they have a teacher, obviously, on the online course, but are the students able to get support from subject teachers at the high school if we have someone in that area of study?
We would offer it, but typically, these are courses that we don't have. So that's why it's usually very different.
Are there some foreign language, some other?
Yeah, in those cases, yeah, absolutely, they could probably seek them out and get some additional support, but usually they're semester courses that we don't necessarily offer, it doesn't mean some of our teachers don't have an area of expertise in there, it just means that it's not something that because of our size that we can offer a, you know, a specific biology class. We will have several biology classes, but maybe not that one that the kid is signing up for.
And I have to say, I apologize because I wrote in my notes that this was under you, but actually, I mean, it is yours, but it was under?
It's just part of the budget presentation.
Perfect to talk about it now.
All right, so thank you. And now, please, would you love to hear about the schedule?
Yeah, absolutely, and I just wanted to thank, we have some members here of our scheduling committee that are present tonight, and I just wanna introduce and acknowledge them, Ann Keegan, Assistant Headmaster, Chris Lavassar, Science Teacher, Janice Berry, Performing Arts Teacher, Janay Barrett is a Biology, Chemistry, and Marine Biology Teacher, holds numerous certifications, and so they've all been involved with this process. In addition, Allison Collins was a key player from the Mathematics Department, Rob Williamson was as well, he had a conflict tonight, but they also wanted to be here to, A, talk about the inclusive process that we involved in looking at this, but then also perhaps answer any questions that I may not be able to. We pretty much started almost right away last year when that vote went through in April, we started getting our faculty together and talking about our schedule. We met formally for the first time last summer with the middle school, and so we had middle and high school teachers getting together to talk about, you know, commonalities that we could have in our schedule. And after several meetings, we basically confirmed that what a middle school student needs and a high school student needs, they certainly have their differences. So we decided that they would continue with their schedule, and we would make some adjustments, and that we would then move, break off, and then work on our high school component, so that's what we did. And then working with the high school component, you know, we looked at three to four different schedule options, some of which were created, all of which were created from different departments and teacher groups and thinking about different things. And ultimately, we decided on the six of eight, which is what we have now. We decided on a schedule in which we would have a break because we went back and forth, we get student feedback, we get teacher feedback. Starting later, we didn't know initially, do we still need break? And it was a good question to ask, we felt as though we did for two reasons. One, our second lunch doesn't start till 1:20 because we share the cafeteria, as you know, with the middle school, so we felt like having break was still important there. And second, and probably just as important is the cultural component of what break has meant for DS, you know? Anytime you have a change, there's an accepting sense of loss, right? And new opportunities come about, but then there's also other traditions and other components that you wanna maintain, and we decided that break was something that was really important to maintain for everybody. So we went with a six of eight. You can see in the schedule version that I gave you, it's very similar to what we have this year. A couple changes are the fact that we have an Xbox, a flex block at the end of the day, which is a 30-minute block, which I'll talk about in more detail later. And each of the blocks is 53 minutes instead of 57 minutes. The fifth period, which is lunch, is 50 minutes, this year it's 52. The reason it's 52 is because of the middle and high school lunch waves. So we're there, we're really only losing two minutes, and the other places, we're losing four minutes. However, we're gaining some additional time in that 240 to 310 flex block too. Not necessarily in that specific academic course that that student might be taking in that first block, but then there's other opportunities for them to be gaining other instructional minutes in either that course or a different course. So that's sort of the schedule. Then in terms of some of the frequently asked questions, I put together a handout for you, some of the key pieces that people wanted to know, and I know it's important for students. Will the flex block reduce the students' DRs? No, it will not. So Wyatt, you can let students know they will still have DRs spread throughout their schedule. So Wyatt, you can let students know they will still have DRs spread throughout their schedule. Those DRs, or directed research, are highly dependent upon what the student chooses. Some of our students have more DRs than others, depending upon what they take, how often those courses meet, et cetera. How much time is taken from each block? As I said, four minutes has been taken, with the exception of the period five. Now, what should be noted is, we're going to have this flex block at the end of the day. So we intend on having many of our assemblies, our short meetings, our town meetings, those things, during that time period, so we will not be pulling kids from academic instructional time. So we are going to make up time there, because they're not be, they won't be pulled from those classes. And I think that that's something that we wanted to try to maintain, because it is, once again, a loss. Our teachers are saying, okay, we're going to lose four minutes of instruction. That was going to impact some teachers more than others in terms of how they voiced their concerns. So ultimately, when we talked about the minutes, in order to make it work with the middle school's schedule and then fitting in using the shared space, we came up with the 53 minutes. Will first block privileges continue for all students? The answer is yes. We like that process, it has worked quite well. I think Wyatt can probably speak to it. Our students have been very receptive. So if you have a first-period DR, freshman, sophomore, junior year, and of course, senior, and they already have seen, you can sleep in. So for some of our students next year, their day may not begin till 9:40, which is pretty nice. So they will still have that option. What is happening to break? Obviously, we're keeping break, it's being shortened by one minute, but there's still the flexible transition time, so it's, it's going to actually work fine. Will seniors be able to leave campus during the flex block? Our intent is yes, because it's the end of the day. Once again, they are, in many cases, young adults, they can start making some of those decisions. Parents can always, we, we tell parents this in, in opening letters, you can always decide you don't want your son or daughter to have senior privilege first quarter, first semester. And we've had situations where families have said, "I want my son or daughter to stay there. Second semester, I'll reconsider it," or "Second quarter, I'll reconsider it." And we've always honored that. That becomes a family decision. But if they sign off allowing them to do it, then they certainly can go. When are clubs meeting? Excellent question. Right now, clubs meet after school. We do have some that meet, if it's a quick check-in during break, I suppose we could still do that. We do have some clubs that meet in the AM. That's going to change, and I'll talk about that in a minute. But clubs for next year will meet from 3:10 to about 3:45 or 4 o'clock. And I put those two times, because we may have some clubs that can continue moving on, but students who are participating in a sport or are participating in drama and need to go to rehearsals may need to leave at 3:45. We have some of that happening now. You know, students will say, "Okay, I can come to the club for 35 minutes, and then I have to go." And our advisors have been great about that. So we're, we're thinking that's not going to change. Now, what perhaps will change will be if some clubs meet in the morning. The exception at this point is Pine Street. Pine Street still needs to have morning time, because their whole mission and purpose is to provide breakfast for folks in Boston, and they need to be able to go out in the morning. Mr. Broody pointed out today that actually, students will not be missing class because of the time change. So there's a opportunity and change.
Those numbers would be very, because that's a rotating kind of roster of students, so there wouldn't be many of those days per month for any particular student.
That's correct, that's correct.
And it's not every Friday.
No, and it's not every Friday, right. Will teachers ever be able to meet with students before school for extra help? We feel as though, in order to maintain the integrity of this change and to really be able to look at the data to see if that extra sleep has benefited our students, if our students are taking advantage of that time to sleep, to collect that data. And I know that we have a, a survey and a professional who's going to be helping us do some research on the results. We feel like for that first year, no. Now, similar to some other schools where they've looked at extra help, and then maybe then in the second year, we look at our data and we decide, okay, maybe we can say one morning a week is good for something like that. My fear, if we said we could have AM, is we would end up with a lot of AM help. We have a culture of that now. For many of our kids, it does work, and so certainly, there's a loss there. But I think it then, at what price? Because I think we're then defeating the purpose of, we want our kids to sleep in. So that's the delicate balance and sort of the, the difficult decision that I feel is imperative in order for us to move ahead with this change. I also think that if we started having kids coming in early, we would have issues with other levels of schooling and why are kids coming in early? Parents be able to meet with teachers before school? I think the answer to that is yes, as long as they can find a mutually convenient time to meet. And keep in mind, we'd be starting at 8:35, so I could see teachers and parents meeting at 8 o'clock, something like that. It does not, it does not eliminate a teacher from saying, sure, I'm going to be in early, I'll meet you at 7:30 that day. But that would be a teacher decision, and that's a contracted piece where technically, they need to be in school 15 minutes before the school day starts. That being said, our teachers are very accommodating, and if it does work for their schedule, better to meet in the morning, I'm sure that they'll do that. Will teachers provide extra help? Well, part of this new flex block we're looking at, that would be some of the time. Keep in mind, currently, some of our teachers provide extra help during DRs now, and there would be a professional obligation for some after-school help beyond the 3:10 time. So we feel as though there'll be sufficient amount of extra help provided, really in a number of different formats. The DR format, which works for a number of our kids and our teachers. The flex block, which, you know, we're still working through, but we can give you some details. And then, of course, there will still be some teachers providing after-school help. Will students have an assigned classroom during the flex block? We feel like we want this flex block to be just that, flexible, but there has to be some structure and some accountability, so that we know where kids are supposed to be, where kids are going, assign in, assign out. So at this point, I don't think we have finalized that, but we do know that there is going to be an assigned space that they have as like a homeroom. But let's say, for example, Wyatt is, his homeroom is with Ms. Barrett, but he wants to go to see Ms. Collins in math, who's his math teacher. At the end of sixth period, he would be able to just go right to Ms. Collins and then sign in with her. And that way, we would have accountability, and she would maintain that sheet. If he did not need to go see anybody, he would then go to Ms. Barrett for that flex block. So there's going to be some fluidity. There's also going to be a rotation of teachers assigned, so sometimes, teachers will be assigned for coverage, and other times, they'll be available for extra help. And then there'll be some other times when, if we're doing a special assembly or an advisory, then that will change that, too, and everybody will be in their assigned places. Will any classes be held during the flex block? And this is, this is a big one. So this is a proposal that came forward from Janice Berry and Jeff Herman. And they met with Anne and I, and we think it has a lot of merit. I think, I'll give the general gist, and then Janice, if there's anything that you want to add, and I'm sure that there'll be questions about this. One of the difficulties, and Judy, you know this full well, has been, how do you provide access to students who want to be involved in the arts, while also taking advantage of the other opportunities and the other requirements that they have to uphold? So we've changed some of the technology in final performing arts electives, a little bit of freedom there, so it doesn't have to just be so many credits, so many credits, but it still is restrictive. We still have kids who would love to be in chorus all four years, but because of their schedules, what, also what they want to take, the fact that many of them are going to go into a science major, want to double up in science, and now, all of a sudden, they're prohibited, but they also have to take wellness, there's a lot packed in. So the proposal would be to have concert band and chorus during that flex block. The pro to that would be the fact that those students would be able to have a guaranteed time slot for those programs. One of the cons would be, it's 30 minutes as opposed to 52 minutes. And then what would we do with that, and what would that look like? And these were questions that we asked, and of course, Janice and Jeff are always prepared, and so they had responses to that. And as you know, Janice is wearing the shirt, you know, a big push of theirs was that music and. We have incredibly talented students who are highly academic, but we also have incredibly talented musical students who want to be able to have that outlet or want to pursue that, because in some cases, they're pursuing it in college. Others, it's a passion, others, it is something that keeps them sane, right? It's, it's got a wide range of purposes. And their idea is to integrate that, so that these students can still take their other electives. If they're taking concert band, it'd meet four out of eight, so on those other days, they'd still have flex block. If you, if you were chorus, same type of thing, and they would be opposite one another. And another thing that we're considering is, what if in chorus and in concert band, we opened it up to the eighth graders? So that the eighth graders could be working with these high school students in a mentoring type of opportunity, where we could expand our concert band. So we could have a serious concert band, and we could have a serious chorus. So Janice, do you want to add to that, and sort of your thoughts?
Yeah, thank you, John, I appreciate the excellent setup. And, and really, and especially to John and Anne, and including Scott Kellin as well, being so supportive of this idea, and, and we really appreciate it. The, like, the music and kind of sums it up. The idea of this came from a couple of years ago, my, my first year here at the high school, and the scheduling season beginning, speaking with students, "Oh, no, what are your plans for next year? Going to continue with jazz band, continue with concert band?" And having that, you know, hearing back from the student, "Oh, I, I want to, but I want to take AP Chemistry, and it's wonderful to have amazing science teachers here." It often is science, right? And it, it seems, and that's, it's not a bad thing, it's a great thing, that we have wonderful opportunities for our students, but it's at the loss of music. Something has to go away. And so this concept of music or, that DS is a music or school, it's music or art, music or chemistry, music or Latin, which is a case of being a small school and, and singletons. And band is a singleton, too. So it's put kids in really difficult positions. And then we came up with this idea of, well, what, you know, what would it look like to be a music and school? A place where you could take music and chemistry, music and Latin, music and whatever your fill-in-the-blank is. That's why it's empty, because every kid has their own fill-in-the-blank. Me, I was a music and music kid. I was taking as much music as I could, but that's not, you know, that might not be normal. But the point is, is that every kid has their own and. And we really believe that if you have music in your life, whether it's through band, through chorus, through jazz band, that it really helps us with a number of our larger school goals, things like student wellness, well-being, right? Having the opportunity to meet music, and having a creative outlet. Our, one of our measg goals is sense of belonging. Well, when you're in an ensemble, you're part of the community. And we really feel that the arts is one of those unique places that we can hit so many of the amazing things we're trying to reach as a school. And when they don't have that access, it's just, just not available. And so we're really excited when, through change, it's okay, here's our opportunity. This is it, we can do it, we can finally be a music and school. And it's the idea of having a protected pathway. So I really want that to be stuck in your head, a protected pathway. We have a protected pathway for English, a protected pathway for science, a protected pathway for math. We have a protected pathway for athletics, for drama. We don't have a protected pathway for music. What's really exciting is there are incredible, great things happening right now at the elementary school to strengthen the foundation and the start of band and chorus. We had our best numbers in retention and recruitment this year in middle school, probably because of Six Flags. You know, it's great to see this, this, this projection, and then it just stops. And the other thing I want you to think about in terms of why we're so excited about this is the idea of a program, and not just a program, but a capital P program. Again, it's the idea, a program is something that kids see themselves at the end. It's something that they look forward to, and I'm thinking of this amazing field trip you're talking about. And that's something that a freshman can say, "Oh, I want to do that. I'm going to make sure my pathway leads me to do that," right? Or, "I'm a sixth grader seeing Mamma Mia this year. Okay, I want to take, I want to go on the pathway that takes me to that program," or whatever thing it is. And right now, if you're a fourth grader starting on the trumpet, and you come to our concert where there's less than 30 kids, and actually, quite honestly, only 16 students technically right now who have band on their schedule, 16, that's not a program that you see yourself in. This change, with the, the changes in the middle school, bringing in the eighth graders to make an eighth-through-12 band, having the opportunity for it to be during the flex block, to be protected, and to incorporate jazz band members into this ensemble. Here's what's really exciting. We crunch the numbers with our current students right now. What would it look like if we did this right now? We wouldn't have 16 kids in band anymore, we'd have 67. We have a band, right? And the, the thing is, we have amazing students right there, right now. The 16 kids that I have the pleasure of working with every day are amazing, and they are committed. They deserve better. They deserve the opportunity to come in, play with a full ensemble, just like maybe some of you did when you were in high school, if you had that experience ever of playing in a full orchestra or band or a chorus. So we're so excited, and I hope that you'll be supportive of this. And again, huge thanks to John and Anne and to Mr., and to Scott for letting us, you know, supporting us of thinking outside of the box. And, and we're just excited, capital E, excited for our capital P program. And I, I'm sorry, I should ask one more thing. Speaking of large, big things, we are, there's four educators traveling to Texas at the end of this year. I don't know if you've heard about this. And a huge thanks to Ms. McCoy for the Ticket to Travel program sponsored by DSCF. We're going to Texas. It's amazing. And we're going to be going to a school in Leander, Texas, just north of Austin. Four teachers from the school. And we're going to be looking at these schools, taking notes on, well, what structures, what schedules, what spaces do they have, what strategies do they use to, to build amazing programs that have, have, that have something so exciting and inspiring and excellent to look to? So we're going to bring all that back. We'll be happy to come back and tell you about what we did in Texas, what we learned, what we saw, what we heard, everything. So thank you for that opportunity. We're excited, the, the timing of everything is just amazing to, to launch this, we hope, for next year. So thank you.
Should we finish this, and then we'll go?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Thank you, Jan.
Don't go anywhere.
Just, yeah, exactly. Library will be available during the flex block. Yes, it will, but not as a traditional DR. What we really envision of the library being is more of a lab, and we're thinking about having our humanities teachers be stationed there in, in pockets and in groups, so our world language, our English and our social studies teachers would have areas where they could work in small, one-to-one, and they could also work in small groups, helping out students in various things. Anne and I have a vision of a writing lab coming out of there. You know, we just think that would be fantastic. And of course, Mr. Butterworth is always so accommodating and is willing to really do whatever. What we don't want it to be is just a number of kids say, "Oh, that's where I'm going to go, flex block." They'll have those opportunities during the day. This is going to be something special. This is going to be more of an opportunity of real, more focused opportunities for that. And even within their assigned spaces, and then if seniors stay on campus, they're going to still have those socialization opportunities, we're not going to eliminate those. We want to maintain the, the library as a place of, of learning, of inspiration, of collaboration, and we think that, you know, this might be a really good time to, to grab onto that. And then finally, faculty meetings and department meetings. We've been having conversations with the association, and there seems to be some real interest from the faculty, because Anne and I made sure that, okay, this sounds like a great idea, but is our faculty even on board with this? And the answer is yes. I think that they look at it as a real positive to meet before the students arrive, to have department meetings, to have faculty meetings. We had a small snippet a couple of years ago where we did some flip days, and I know that the reactions were mixed from the students, but a real positive outcome of that was, we had some great PD in the morning. And that was really, really positive. So that is what our plan is, is to have some morning meetings, so that after school, we can have, teachers can be working with clubs, coaching, you know, extra help, or on days that they have personal things to do, leave. So.
Thank you. Judy, had her hand up first, then you can go, I guess.
Oh, wow. I am, I couldn't be more...
Oh, wow. I am, I couldn't be more happy about the proposal, Janice, for chorus and, and, and concert band. It's, it's amazing. 10 years ago, before most of you were here, we were talking about an arts block. And we were talking about how are we going to put that program into place? You know, I remember like at my first FOPA meeting. And I think it's really, you know, DS is, is performing arts is really fabulous. And, and it can be even better. And I also think that the idea of having eighth graders as part of it, of the concert band, is really wonderful for one other reason. And I'll tell you, on my daughter's first day of high school freshman year, she got lost, didn't know where the hell her class, excuse me, where her class was. And a junior boy who she knew from the summer drama program was standing there. And he went and he took her and he walked her to her class. Because they knew one another through arts. And I think that this is a wonderful opportunity for these eighth graders to get to know lots of older, you know, students. And, and really, the community aspect of it is, is almost as important as the, as the artistic aspect. I think it's fabulous. And I just, and I, and there's one other thing I want to say, which is, you've done such a marvelous job at taking the opportunity to make this change really exciting. Really, really, it's just fabulous. I'm really, I just am happy about everything I've heard. And that's all I, I just wanted to, I'm just so excited about this, so.
I think we were all enjoying it. Just keep going.
So I, I want to thank you and commend you and the team for the, the hard work, the creative thinking. And looking at this as a real opportunity to, to create programs, to enhance programs, develop programs. And, and keeping flexible to ideas and input and taking those on board and working with them. So many, many thanks. You know, Janice, you, you were, were quite eloquently outspoken when this issue had come up last year. And you committed to turning it into an opportunity for positive change. So a particular thanks to you. Question around the, the, the every other day chorus and band. Would there be opportunities for those, the smaller subset of students who are interested in, I guess, the more fulsome?
The music and music kids.
The music and music kids. Thank you. Yes. To have a greater exposure within their schedule than the 35 minutes? Or the 30 minutes?
Right. Oh, okay. So if they were only, let's say, doing chorus and they wanted to have additional music, for example?
Or if they wanted to, so right now they're in concert band and you're with them six of eight? Or every other day for fif- for 56 minutes? And then this would change to 30 minutes every other day?
Right.
For those 16 as well?
Right. So yeah, the ensemble time is going to be reduced. But we feel that even though the time is lost in that way, have, actually having the ensemble is the greater win. And, or even though the time is shorter. What's really cool is that by, by moving this to the flex block. For example, a student like myself would have been, that meant that I could now be in band and chorus and I can have jazz band in high school day. Right? And I can do all three if I want to. You can't do all three. Or if I am a chorus member that wants to take music theory, I can't take music theory now. If I take music theory, I'm out of chorus. So we could have students, and I've heard other students say, I really want to take guitar, but I'm also in jazz band. You can't, can't do both. So you could be in band and take guitar. You could take, you could be in band and chorus and take music theory. You know, it opens up more elective opportunities for students by putting it at the end of the day.
So a lot of that is really in the messaging, communication with the students, that this is opening up opportunities even for the music and music kids.
Right, right, exactly. Because now, yeah, we've had students, I just, music theory we've had in the fall. And there were two students and then in their freshman who were in chorus in eighth grade. But they really wanted to take music theory, but taking that course meant extending to chorus. And it's a loss to Jeff to lose a couple more kids, even though they're doing something really great. They're actually expanding their knowledge of music. And to expand your knowledge of music, we take you out of the ensemble where you can share it. So it's, while the time is, is going to be a change and an adjustment and could be seen as a loss. We see the gain in elective opportunities, whether it's music, whether it's science, whether it's more DRs. Because they will receive credit for this class during the flex block. So it does give them more flexibility during their school day as well. Just exciting.
Wow, I'm sorry. Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Kate, did you have a question?
Oh, Janice answered.
Okay. I wanted to echo both Judy and Michael's commendation. To all, all of you who made the schedule and, and to John for leading the charge. For Janice specifically for, you know, taking what I think for a lot of people when we made this decision in April was like a moment of feeling really like uncomfortable and perhaps even unhappy and worried that, you know, a lot of really dreadful things would happen to schedules and also students' experiences and teachers' experiences. I feel a lot of positive energy and I feel like looking at this schedule and your frequently asked questions, that you have answered really a lot of our questions. And that a lot of, a lot of the sort of concerns that were raised by students, families, community members about all the things that would be lost actually if not come to pass. And that feels really good. That you guys have done the hard work to make that happen because like, I know that there's a lot of hard work that happens behind an organized proposal. So thank you. I'm super excited and curious about all the things that, that are to come. This library time and flex box seems really exciting to me. I know you mentioned briefly a writing lab. I'm curious whether or not there might not be opportunities for, say, strong students, or I think about our honor society students who do a lot of tutoring. Might there be opportunities to sign up to be a mentor during those times?
Yeah. And that's something I know that you had conversations with Mary Andrews and Liz Malad with.
Yeah, I think it's the, the tutor piece for National Honor Society has always been hard to capitalize. So I think that's an opportunity. There's some even conversations across school, sort of mentoring and working. You know, I think a lot of this will evolve. I think we're going to try to do, stick with our nuts and bolts to begin. You know, there'll be some trial and error and a lot of learnings for sure. But yeah, I think it's, it's exciting. I think it's just, you know, it's a lot to swallow and I think we'll, again, I think we'll try and, you know. Thank you.
And if I just, really, really quick, you know, just today alone, we met with, with Mr. Lavassar. And he and members of the science department had looked at, you know, the flex block structures and then how about thinking about this? And it was like a three-page document that had a whole series of things. And I point that out just to tell you the investment that people have in looking at this and that they want to make this work. And they understand the parameters of what, and our intentions of what we need to meet. While also providing and maintaining the cultural aspects that we can keep, you know what I mean? So it's that jigsaw puzzle. And that's what I've been most impressed with. You know, and I told Ms. McCoy that Allison Collins, a math teacher, actually developed the Finland model, you know? And she didn't go to Finland, you know, but we talked a lot about Finland and what we discovered there and the flexibility. And Allison said, hey, I have this neat idea and ran it across math department. And then it grew and then we brought it together. So there's been a lot of that work. And some of that maybe isn't necessarily reflected in what you see here or even all these questions. But take these sheets of paper and stack it up to here. And that's really what a lot of people in that building have done.
There's like the tip of the iceberg.
Yeah, yeah. And I just, I want to point that out too, that, you know, ultimately we come down to this. But there's a lot of discussions and there's a lot of, you know, contemplation and debate that takes place. And, and sometimes that's disagreement, but that's okay. Because in order to try to get to a place we want to get to, that's going to happen. This is an incredibly professional staff, incredibly passionate, as you can see from, you know, Janay's trip and, and music and music. And trust me, Chris is incredibly passionate about teaching as well. That, you know, we will make this work and we'll make this work well. In that first year, we may have a couple of stumbles, right? But we will continue to refine that and improve that and make it better. Because that's, you know, obviously what we want to do, but that's also our obligation. But there's a lot of effort that has gone into this process. And we know that there might be something within this that doesn't quite work as well as we wanted it to. And we will have to reevaluate that and look at that. But it's still better to take those strides and to experiment with that learning to give kids opportunities.
And just yay, music and flex block at the end of the day. That's like a no brainer for me, so.
Nope, nope, wait. I have questions and then I have to go back to Kate because she hasn't asked yet. I did, oh, thank you, Janice. Thank you all, the teachers, especially those who are on the committee. I love that it was, there was some creative thinking to say, I was one who was a little bit apprehensive because that's sort of my nature. I was like, oh my goodness, there's so many questions. You've done a great job. I feel of bringing everybody together and allowing them to go and explore and then come back and discuss. I still though have a huge question about the Boston students.
Yeah.
And that before school, if, if, as I believe is still the current case, they will still be arriving about the same time that they were. And so would there be potential for opportunities for them potentially to perhaps get extra help or have writing lab if they need to, or doing something else before school just because of their unique situation? And I know that that may not have all been figured out yet, but.
Yeah. I mean, some of that involves transportation, some of which, you know, I, I have knowledge of, but don't always, you know, that's a little more complicated. But what we have said, and, and I should point out, a kudos to Anne Keegan and Don Fatori, who brought all of the Boston students together from the middle and the high school, had a luncheon. And sat down with them and asked questions about their commute, their day. What would this look like? What would that look like? Kate Porter was there as well. And although I don't think we resolved a lot of things, I think we heard a lot of information that was really helpful to us and what students needed. I think what students would, they would love to have that opportunity to have that extra sleep. They also, and they're so smart, and they recognize the restrictions as it pertains to Boston traffic and to time changes. And, you know, meeting all in one location. And yes, high school kids can do that, but middle school kids may not be able to do that because they can't be alone at a stop, et cetera. One of the things that the kids came up with is, they said, what would really help is if we had a space in the high school that we could go to in the morning, where we could relax, that it was comfortable, that we could do some studying, that we could listen to some music, that maybe we could get a quick bite to eat, just something that kind of brought some sort of quiet peace to their day. You know, I think that's the least we owe them. I do think that, you know, hopefully we can get creative and figure something out over time with transportation. But we certainly are committed to, you know, providing opportunities. It is a shame that if we're not able to give them that same opportunity. On the other hand, they also are coming from a lot further away. And there are other barriers with traffic and traffic flow. And, and it certainly won't be because of a lack of effort on everyone's part. I think it'll just be more of, you know, here's what we can do. And then in addition, here's what we can provide for our Boston students in terms of giving them an environment that they can transition their day in a, in a smoother, calmer way.
It should still result in at least 10 minutes later start to their day anyhow, shouldn't it? Because of the, the shift?
It really won't because they were, I mean, they basically said if they were ten minutes late getting out, they were late. So the timing, they verified that the timing. And the other interesting thing I thought they said is that a lot of their parents take them to the bus stops and their parents go to work really early. So they were saying if, if we went later, we're not sure we'd have a ride because our parents go to work.
And did you guys discuss the commuter rail pass? And that was not really attractive to them either?
Yeah. I think it was, they would, it would still take them time to get to all the different, to get there, like this.
They got to get to the commuter rail itself.
Right.
Which is not all over Boston.
And not every family was comfortable with that. They were saying, my mom won't let me do that.
Right. Well, thank you for having the luncheon. I appreciate that. Didn't, I think that was a great idea. I just want to make sure that we're, like, I was thinking like the doors are going to be locked until like eight o'clock or something, you know, so.
No, well, just like we do the morning programs at the elementaries, we would provide supervision. We, we were envisioning both the spot in the high school and the middle school, so they each had their own space. But we would coordinate that there'd be supervision and, and a nice place. We were talking to Monique about doing a DSEF grant for furniture and such to, to develop a spot. And Scott was great about thinking of spaces and so was John and Anne. Definitely had Plan A and Plan B going simultaneously.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I mention one quick point about John and, and Scott and this team as well? Because don't forget, a few years back, you guys talked about trying to combine the schedules, run the same kind of schedule. And there was a lot of frustration with that, if I remember correctly. That came out in my entry interviews. People, were some hard feelings about that left behind. Why should we have to change our schedule to accommodate them and vice versa? The fact that these guys were able to get to this place amicably, professionally, and come up with a solution that actually is going to meet, that's still going to have that commonality that we really wanted. And solve some of those problems that have been an issue, that is just off the charts and beyond my, my wildest dreams in terms of what you guys were able to accomplish with that. So thank you for that.
Thank you. All right, Judy.
I just had a quick question. Janice, doesn't the middle school have their chorus and band their last period? And how will that, how will that work?
Yeah, great question. So there's a little bit of an adjustment to middle school, which is why Scott has been involved with the conversations as well. So the plan would still to be having an alternating day for both middle school and high school. So instead of what it is currently, sixth grade, seven, eight, sixth grade, seven, eight, As and B days. The other change to this plan would now be, think more middle school, high school, middle school, high school. And middle school day will be the sixth and seventh grade band and the sixth and seventh grade chorus.
Oh, that's great.
And then eighth through 12 chorus, eighth through 12 bands.
So you'll be, you'll be on alternate days, you'll be high school, middle school, and the same with Jeff.
Correct. And that means at the same time, we would be having sixth and seventh band and chorus going on. And likewise for the high school day. So we've already talked about those coordinating efforts between both buildings in terms of, you know, that, that the days will line up appropriately and we have full confidence that that will work. And there was one more thing I was just thinking of. The exciting, the other, yeah, the other part of that change of having a sixth and seventh grade band or a sixth and seventh grade chorus is that it creates a little mentoring opportunity there for seventh graders as well. So incoming sixth graders are learning from seventh graders. And then we've already talked about the benefits of eighth coming into the wings of high school and like looking at that opportunity ahead of them. But that's, but, and also if you're somebody who wants to do band and chorus, you will still be able to do that. We already do that now, alternating, where the band.
Fabulous.
Chorus off, band off, chorus off, in both settings, in middle school and high school.
Excellent. Thank you. Yes.
I think this is all great. Thank you so much. I wish my daughter were a freshman because she's a music, music kid. But no other kids can do it. As for the, this is so helpful. Are you going to distribute this to the greater public?
Yes. So Anne and I have already talked about a communication rollout that we will have to our students and our parents. Certainly we'll have a frequently asked questions packet that will be sent to all parents and guardians. And then we've also talked about going into classrooms, into some smaller classroom settings and having those conversations. Those conversations are much more effective if I'm in a classroom talking to 18 to 22 kids about these changes. So that that kid in the back row in the third seat is more likely to ask their question or more likely to be part of that process rather than a full assembly. And we'll follow up that first day with explaining things, but we're going to do small groups that way. And we've also discussed having a couple of parent coffees. We'll probably have some, a couple of morning ones and a couple of afternoon ones. So that people can come in and ask questions and how will this work and how will that work and, yeah.
Michael.
Kate took care of it. Thank you.
I asked Michael.
That was good text.
That was good tech. All right. Everybody good?
Yeah.
Wow, thank you guys.
Reiterate, thank you so much. That was great.
A lot of work.
A lot of, a lot of work.
I can tell you, these guys, Anne and John, what we asked of the two of them and Scott to go back and have their faculty get on board with and pull forward is really, I'm truly, truly impressed. And I know Beth feels the same way. We had a great conversation with John about it today. And I'm, I feel that same excitement that you do about the possibilities. We haven't even scratched the surface of the possibilities. When we start to go through this, the ideas are gonna percolate. There are a lot of smart people hanging around here and they are going to generate ideas. Maybe there are some opportunities for deeper dive courses, you know, within our existing schedule that's coming. Who knows? So it's a, it's a really cool time for us and, and, you know, I can think of a lot of administrators and leaders I've met through the years who would have balked at this. You guys stepped up big time, so.
Well, I would reiterate what John said. I mean, the faculty, these guys.
Awesome.
They came to the table and lied.
Which is a credit to the professionalism of this staff.
And, you know, and there's no doubt, there's some things that, you know, will, change is hard, right? And so we'll have, some things we'll have to figure out ways. And they've acknowledged those and we've acknowledged those. And then probably our kids will acknowledge some of those. But I'm optimistic because we do have a professional staff and these teachers love kids, they're passionate, as you can see, about what they do. So we will make this work and make it work well.
Thank you.
Really psyched.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it. Okay. Finally, um, so, so, John, financial points, yes, monthly reports.
Like, it's gonna be so dry now. So. Sorry. I was looking at this page and I, trying to be sustainable.
Thanks, guys.
Crammed everything on one page and I know it's a lot, but I was trying to fit it all on one piece of paper. So it's a little busy when you look at it. So as I, as I've been telling you in your monthly reports, I'm trying to retain the existing information, so you always have a continuum of where we are. So I'm gonna highlight just the changes that are new. So on the revenues, the new piece of information we have is that we do have quite a sizable CD that we receive interest income on twice a year, and the first one is in December. And that allows us to estimate what the next six months is gonna be. So I did, we did report that revenue, which puts us with a $20,000 positive variance in interest revenue, in bank interest, because of booking that. So we booked about $21,000 and then I've encumbered $21,000 because that will be the backend. So with the CD, we're able to roll in, we're getting about a 2.35% interest rate right now, which is actually really good compared to where we are in our savings account. So that is something that we're able to pool a bunch of our funds together and invest in that. And Jim started that about a year and a half ago. If you remember, we had the same variance in bank interest last year. I, I will probably be hesitant to increase it to that because we're not always guaranteed on the interest rates. And two, now with sort of the OPEC funding that we're gonna be doing and other stuff, some of that money that's in the CD is gonna have to go other places. So it's always nice to have that little pickup, but it wouldn't be something that I would incorporate into the budget going forward.
Okay.
So that's it on revenue. On the expenditure side, we have had a lot of staff changes post-budget and recent. And at this point in time, I'm still analyzing everything, but I do anticipate that we'll probably have a positive salary variance of at least $100,000 and that may grow a little bit. It has been a very active, our EAs adjust, as of this payroll, just encumbered the last two who were hired. So it's, it's just a fast changing world out there.
Yeah.
But I do, I was able to tell you that I think we have at least $100,000 in salary variances. On the expenditure side, there really is not anything new to report. Everything that I have been reporting is holding steady. This is where we really start looking closer, more closer on our projections. I do think I'm gonna see some additional savings in our retiree health insurance, which we'll talk about when we talk, in the budget will come in play for next year. We, January, remember, is their open enrollment and, and price changes. And so I've had at least a couple of retirees who have been on family plans who have gone off. So that is going to result in a savings for us and I'll analyze that for you guys and give you that information at your next February meeting. We had hoped to have Bob Brown here tonight, but he had an unexpected family and medical emergency come up. So he is on now scheduled to be with us on February 25th. And I just give a, I just did give another little update on our OPEC administrator selection. I know it's later on the report, so I'll let Maggie talk about that later, but I just wrote some things on your report for you to have. Does anyone have any questions on the financials themselves?
I have, oh, Michael, go ahead. So the savings for the health, retiree healthcare, though, does that then, so somebody rolls off a family that goes to individual, but then as people retire, then don't, how do you then sort of fold that in?
Right. So we don't have a lot of retirements in a given year, so I always base the budget on our actual retirees. And the changes then usually offset each other because it's really hard.
Well, yeah, it's really hard, yeah.
And anytime, we do have, you know, people still on non-Medicare plans. So once they turn 65 and they're Medicare eligible, I see savings from that. So it all sort of sometimes offsets.
So it all seems to.
Right. So we don't, we don't dig down and try to get it down to the penny because it's just not worth the exercise. So the, the ins and outs always sort of cover. I'm, I'm always comfortable that I'm never gonna be short.
Okay.
For the retirees. And then remember, their, their increases are much smaller, premium increases are much smaller than what we see in active healthcare. And I always know half of the year already because we're in January to December, so I'm only, I'm only guessing.
That's true, yeah, so it's for six months, yeah.
So it's a much more finite thing that I'm trying to, to budget.
Okay. Thank you, that was helpful. Michael.
In talking about the salary variances, you said that there's a lot of changes there. Is there any concern around churn or attrition or is it just happened to be a lot of things?
Yeah, just personal issues on some of our educators. The, our educational assistance is always pretty transient, but we've seen it more so this year. That population is always looking for teaching positions or other things.
And the invite, the, the current.
The market, yeah.
Market is strong, so people are picking and choosing.
Yeah.
So is that something that's pretty, that would be an ongoing concern potentially around the EAs and the market for?
Yeah, I mean, it could be. I just, we're seeing it actually in all the buildings, not just here at our region. So, and it's also just the type of, the, the market that an educational assistant fills, right? They are a little bit more always looking for the next thing sometimes. We've had a couple of attorneys leave on our educational assistant profile, which is causing, you know, people take, take their time off and then decide they don't want to come back. So that it's been a, it's been a wide variety of issues, but when you pull them all together, I think we've seen more, more position changes this year than I think I've, I've seen in prior years. And so whenever you have someone potentially leave, there's always a, a period of time where you might not have someone. So that's some of the salary savings that we're seeing. In addition to just teachers, once a, an educator either takes a leave of absence or resigns, there's always, their backfill with a long-term sub, which also generates savings. And we also had some post-budget staffing changes. So it was a little bit of everything in that, in that $100,000.
A lot, not something you can predict from year to year. This was unusual, just.
Right.
It's what keeps it interesting.
It is. And I, and I will say that if you look at kind of.
My payroll coordinator doesn't think that anymore.
But if you think about EAs in general, from system to system, it's pretty unusual to have long-term EAs. It really is, especially in today's environment because it's gotten so competitive for teaching at the elementary level especially, so competitive that, like, how many applicants did we have for our English teaching job a few years back?
120.
120 applicants. With 120 applicants, if you can't get a nibble in some of these great systems, it's a calculated risk to be an EA and then look for that best opportunity to teach. And we see it all the time.
We do see a lot of our educational assistants also step up and be the long-term subs, which then means that we have to backfill that educational system. So I've got one little domino effect that's now in its, like, fourth person.
Those are good news stories, right?
Donna Scungeo in payroll deserves a lot of credit. She's a snake.
Who's gonna change positions today? So, I mean, all along, we're in, you know, good shape, there's no surprises. We are still running, the, the number did increase a little bit for the Fed services, but some of that is one-time expenses I know we're not gonna have going forward. And it's also our new students to the district in some cases, so it wasn't, we didn't know, we didn't miss budget, we just didn't know to budget for it. So even though that seems like a big number, I'm not really alarmed by it because I know what it's made up of and I know it's not gonna be something that we have to necessarily try to build into the budget going forward.
Okay. That's helpful. Good?
Yeah, no, I mean, I was just gonna say, I think with regard to the teaching assistants too, it's a credit, you know, we, it seems from my experience, you, you are often hiring teaching assistants who are certified teachers, who are experienced educators, whereas that job description does not necessarily require that. And that's a calculated risk, right? Like, on one hand, you have folks working with these kids who are, you know, special educators themselves and, and that's awesome because it brings such a value, but then if a better opportunity comes along, you know, any one of us would need to take it, right, for our own families and to be responsible. So, you know, I think it's a trade-off that you guys are making and sometimes it creates this, especially in like a zero unemployment environment, right?
Well, it's an excellent stepping stone for educational assistants to come to a school district like this because there are a lot of opportunities. You'll notice at our elementaries that our new teachers actually are educational assistants who've been in our system. It's almost like a two or three-year interview. They already know the curriculum and it's a great way for us to just go running versus breaking brand-new.
And get a chance to kind of see the person in action for a while.
And if you're an EA coming from Dover Sherwin, our 10 comparable communities that we sometimes refer to are gonna look more closely at those EAs than they might even a teacher, because they know they're coming out of a great system.
We had three, three folks from last year as EAs who are now classroom teachers in other school districts.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so moving on to just for year 21, I provided you a lot of new information for your book and I did bring you a set that was outside your packet that was already three hole punched.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
So, and I, later I can give a tutorial which has the goal. So we're, we are a little further away from where we were in January. So tonight, we were focusing on our sort of staffing changes and known retirements and any section changes we wanted to make. I will be honest that there is still a lot of unknowns at this point in time. Healthcare will not be actually voted on until February 27th. So that's a number that we always, you know, sit around and wonder what it is. I'll just refresh your memory that we are estimating a 10% increase. Usually that should be the high watermark, we hope. I should have some glimpse into what it's gonna be when we meet on the 25th, but it won't be finalized till the 27th. So we'll have to see where, where the glimpse comes in versus where we budget it to whether or not we'll make any kind of adjustments prior to your open hearing or operating something forward in March for your open hearing. The other big thing, obviously, is we're all still negotiations for all the contracts. Some of the salaries are settled and everything now is still up in your reserve. In the reserve also, remember, is your transportation increase because our bid is out there on the street. Next Wednesday at 12:15, we will be opening whatever bids we get. So I'm sort of on pins and needles with that. We have had good response to requests for our bid packet. I think that's similar to what they saw five years ago. In addition to requests, I've had a couple of vendors actually asking specific questions. So I don't know what that will mean for us, but I think that's a positive aspect, so.
For a ceremony for this?
I know. It's like a signing.
I said we're gonna get balloons and have a little, a little party, so.
Yeah, that could be fun.
Take pictures.
Yeah. So then I will have that, those numbers for all three districts when we, at your next meetings. So we'll see where that goes. The other, yeah, so transportation, salaries, healthcare. So those are still sort of the unknowns that we're just waiting on. If you flip to the summary of budget adjustments, I'll just walk you through the new information that we have received to date, since we presented the budget to you in December. On the revenue side, the governor's budget did come out. And if you know from sort of hanging around here for a while, we actually use the governor's budget for our revenue projections going forward. So once those numbers are out, we usually stick with that. And we've done an analysis and we were, that never waivers enough to make it material enough for us to worry about it. So those are the numbers that we will. So with that, looking at chapter 70 and chapter 71, and I will say, chapters 71, they usually are pretty conservative, so that's why it looks like we're going backwards. That number tends to come in low and then will creep up. But then that always, that's why you always, we usually do see an increase, a positive variance for transportation, but that's just the methodology. I think they go for, to make sure their total budget works before they put too much towards regional transportation. So I wasn't surprised to see that number go below what we got last year. So we have an increase of about $104,000. So what that does is that actually will decreases the assessment that we have to, the assessable amount that we assess to the towns. So that's why it's in red because it decreases more revenue, decreases what we have to offset the towns.
John, this means we're gonna get probably $104,000 more from the state than we were, than we thought we were gonna get, right?
Than what we got this year.
Than what we got.
Than what we budgeted. So we, we used, you know, cherry sheet.
This is good.
Yes.
Yes.
This is good. That's why I'm saying, it's red because it's, it's red because it decreases what, yeah, I know.
Red seemed bad.
Yeah.
Red is good.
But if you look in the, decreases, decreases the town assessment, so that's why.
Get it.
Yeah. So anything that's red decreases the town's assessment, so that's why it's red. So to walk through some of the budget adjustments that we're bringing forward tonight, the Fed Coordinator, so that was what Kate McCarthy, the proposal that she presented to you after your last meeting. Remember that the out-of-district piece is already in our budget, so we're looking just to add the .5 for the administrative position. So we're putting a placeholder of $60,000 in for that position. John, and as you guys know, the high school has the NEASC visit coming up. We started getting better quotes for estimates from them of what that visit costs. So I looked at what he had in his budget that was flexible and had to increase it for just next year. So this is a one-time increase for $9,000 to cover the cost of that extravaganza.
That's paying people to come and.
That's paying.
To credit us, which we need because otherwise we're not a high school, right?
It's a scam.
You would think it would be a state, wouldn't you?
What?
Wouldn't you think it would be a state expense?
Yeah. A lot of it is actually on the hospitality side.
Yeah, it is.
Right. Oh, yeah, we have to feed them and house them.
Room and board, yeah.
They do pay people mileage, at least they used to. They're coming out for Western Mass to serve on the team.
Yeah, they do. We paid the, when they came out last time, we had to pay mileage. But this will just be a one bump up and you'll see it go down in the next year unless we come up with something else that we need. But there wasn't enough in our existing budget to cover the expense, which they were thinking was between $11,000 and $14,000.
Which my guess is, is actually down.
It is. The last time it was about $24,000.
I was gonna say, people were carrying 25, 30,000.
And, Tom, sorry, did you say how many, how often this happens?
Ten years, once every 10 years.
Once every 10 years. I know it's pre-work, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I mean, there'll be subsequent follow-ups, but we won't have to have any follow-up for seven years in terms of people actually visiting. Every year, if there's something I have to do or the high school has to do, report-wise, but in terms of putting people up in hotels and feeding them.
And will the school committee also meet with these folks at some point?
Yeah, and I'm glad you brought that up, Dr. Keo. So on Sunday, in the past model, it used to be this big extravaganza where you'd bring in your, your concert band and you'd have water fountains and all this crazy stuff. Yeah, I'm telling you, it was crazy and Dr. Keo knows as a principal, it was something out of sight. But what they have asked is they will be working Sunday at the hotel. We're gonna probably put them up in a hotel in Norwood, the same place that we put them up for their short visit. But they did indicate they may be coming here on Sunday just for some interviews and if there are some school committee members who are available to speak to them, they can also do some of that during the time they're here, it's just it is condensed.
Do you have a date for that already?
November 1st, 2nd, 3rd, and 4th.
Yeah.
So that's Sunday, November 1st. And I'll, I'll make sure I give Dr. Keo a more detailed report on that in terms of what they expect. I, I don't know if they want to speak to every member or if they want a representation.
They want interviews on Sunday. Would they want us to go to them? Is that like a...
No, I think they would come here. They would come here, yep. They just, they, in the past, we used to have a reception, so now they just would come for a series of interviews, probably with Dr. Keo, Ms. McCoy, Ms. Torre, some members of school committee, probably talk to me a little bit, but then the rest of it would be on Monday morning when they begin their observations and their visits.
And a lot of us participated when they were here last year, my side and most interviewed, so. Our next increase, and actually these, they're not in order of importance, but in order of their function code, so that's how it lines up in your budget book, just so you know how we're walking through this. And so the high school has come forward and requested an addition of a .2 FTE for high school Chinese. I think that program is growing and probably more so even with the FLESS program coming up, the ability to change languages. I think we felt like that, that was, made sense to add that .2. And you can look at that in relation to your class sizes. That was part of the reason of giving the class sizes was to look at that, but also so you could sort of analyze our increases that we were requesting. And so that would come in at 22,000. Because we're past the February 1st and we do know retirements that were, we are notified about are final, we are able to do reductions for both educator retirements and staffing changes because we also had, you know, we've had some staffing changes that weren't retirements that we know are gonna go forward. And so we're able to reduce the budget by 95,000 for that. All positions that were vacated though are going to be refilled. And obviously, we sort of pinpoint where we're comfortable putting the new teacher's salary on that. So obviously, something like a chemistry teacher, you know, we wanna make, that's a higher demand to find and so we put that a little higher than we say we did our middle school social studies teacher. So we do look at that when we come up with the savings that we're looking at. So that 95,000 is conglomerate of multiple staffing changes. We talked about the one-to-one Chromebook initiative, so the increase that we would need to ask for is 26,000. That is taking into account the costs that Mr. Otako gave you last go-around, knowing what placeholder we already had in the budget, but also we had on the high school supplemental plan, $5,000 for Chromebooks, which we won't need because we would be doing, we'd have Chromebooks from here to the high school. So the net number that we would have to add is 26,000 on top of what we already had in the budget.
But that would only be this year because then the number that we were given here was 36, so that'd be next, the future?
So that number that you have, and I'll let Ms. McCoy go over that as she went, is what the, the annual, the additional annual cost would be for this program.
Okay.
I think the question was, why 26 when it's actually 36?
Yes. Because it was... Because it's a placeholder that we already had in the budget for what we're seeking.
So in the following year, it would...
For the following year, right.
It would in fact.
This is just to make up for what we needed to add to this current year budget that we'd already started to vote.
Okay, just clarifying, thank you.
So there is a memo in there that talks about that in your package. Then we also have, we had a mid-year retirement in our nursing at the high school position and so we already know that, that happened after I did your December budget, but we were able to take a $25,000 savings for that change in position. Since we last met, I have received the new estimate for the Norfolk County retirement. I had estimated a 10% increase, it actually came in at 7%, so I'm able to shave off $21,300 from my initial budget protect, projection, so that is to the good. And then we had our meeting last week with our Maya representative for all of our insurances and he was able to provide us what the almost solidified increases were for our workers' comp and property and liability. And so based on those numbers, I was actually able to take $11,000 off what we had put in the budget for December, in December against the...
Do you recall what the, your estimate was, the percentage increase?
For insurances.
For insurance, yeah.
Yeah, we typically use like eight to nine percent. Lower on the workers' comp, we've got three components, and they're coming in much lower than what we had thought. He just said, be happy and...
Be happy and walk away, that never happens.
Right, right.
I mean, think about your homeowners.
On the workers' comp, we do have pretty good experience rate, so we're starting to see that.
Good.
We do see an increase everywhere, every, every year anyway because it's based on your payroll, because our payroll goes up, but how much it goes up, you know, the percentages, our experience rate is, he said, one of the best you've seen. So that helps offset the increase. And so obviously, we always start like eight percent and then he's, he's telling me it's more like three percent, so that's just in the workers' comp piece.
I think that's an interesting, kind of an interesting thing to look at and probably also plays into satisfaction and maybe job satisfaction or if it's truly the lowest that he's seen or among the lowest.
Right, but he's also comparing us to, so here we are in the region, we're a school, he's comparing us to municipalities that aren't quite schools, right? So I always have to take the compliments like, ah, thank you, but, you know, I, I understand it a little bit more. So all in all, the adjustments we're bringing forward to tonight are actually reducing the budget we presented in December by 35,300. That puts us at a total increase right now of 3.4%. Last year, we were at 2.75%, but I will remind you, last year, we had $190,000 reduction in healthcare. We didn't have an increase, we had $190,000 reduction because of the whole changeover and we're not really sure how it was all gonna play out and the benefits that we got from that. And we were in the last year of a transportation contract, which was less than one percent.
That's your lowest.
So we really are in the same ballpark where we were last year, it just doesn't seem that way because of a couple of factors. But the healthcare was a huge piece last year that benefited the two towns. With the new numbers, I did run a new assessment calculation and I will highlight that a couple of things that changed with the calculation, in the assessment calculation is, one, we did not have the debt, the capital assessment percentages completed yet. So those were completed and they have been updated. Just how we saw about a 1% swing in the operating assessment, it really plays out into the debt too. So fiscal year '24 Dover was 57.21, now they're 56.21. Sherburne was at 43.78, now they're, they were at 42.79 last year, they're at 43.78. So that 1% swing also happened to capital and debt. But the only thing that goes against is your 923,000, so it's not a huge, a huge change. The other key thing is minimum local contribution. So with the governor's budget comes up, the new required amounts, the minimum local contributions for the two towns. Where this plays into favor a little bit, a sort of can swing the assessment, total assessment calculation, is that Sherburne's, if you take the increase in the minimum local contribution and compare Dover's increase to Sherburne's increase, Sherburne almost picked up 53% of the, of that increased assessment where Dover picked up 47. So I think we knew that Sherburne was gonna start having a little bit higher of a minimum local contribution because you're doing better, a little more growth, that all factors into that. And so unfortunately, then that means that you have to pay more for your education.
So it's a little bit of a double hit with both the enrollment as well as the financial strength, relative financial strength.
Which is why I wanted to explain a lot for purposes of gene, because last year they saw a .68% increase in their assessment because it was all, everything was going the other way. And this year, they're looking at more a 5.5% increase in their assessment.
The, the enrollments that you have here, you have fiscal year 2021, are those, is that actual or is that projected?
No, no. So the assessment goes on, so the assessment for fiscal year 21 is actually based on fiscal year 20.
So that would be actual because you have the 20 numbers?
Yes.
Yeah, not, that's not projected?
No, it's not projected.
Okay, thanks.
It's always, it's like a year and...
Year and a rears.
Yeah, and a rears. The other pieces of information that we've added for your review, obviously, is the class sizes, which we've already discussed. We did the annual summary of staffing so that you can see the teachers and all the other different departments, just tried to highlight where we were increasing. So in the regular education, that was your number last year, we're adding a .2 this year. Special education, we're adding a .5.
Yes.
All the other departments, actually, are, are same. You will notice if you go back and look in your book, last year though, the summary of staffing was before we did all the changes, so you will see that there are additions in guidance and special ed because we added all those programs. So it actually worked out better for us to do our summary of staffing with version 2 because now you have the complete picture.
That makes sense.
Because version 1 last year didn't have all the changes and you think about all the special education changes that we made. So I just, if you go back and compare it, that's what it is. This now incorporates all the changes that we made for fiscal year 20 plus what we're projecting for fiscal year 21. And then just to pull the whole piece of the budget puzzle together, we like to share the anticipated grants because that shows you what outside the general funds that we are spending to support services here. So it goes through each of the grants, what it sort of supports and how much we have this year and compared to what we had last year. Pretty much, they run pretty similar. I'm not, I'm not aware of anything that would significantly change for fiscal year 21. I think I covered all of the points of interest that I wanted to share. Are there any questions on anything?
I have a question about the ESA grant, Title 4A. Is, is, is that earmarked or is that kind of go in and, I mean, certainly there's gonna be one-to-one and other needs for, so do you just, do you tag those things to what's in the budget and where it would be relevant?
So that's a brand-new grant that we just got this year and so I think what we do is it enhances some of our, so it allows Beth to do some more conferences, support in the schools. So we don't, it doesn't, we don't really pull it out to support things that are ongoing, but more things that add.
Enrichment.
Enrichment.
For teachers and students.
So that will be available, but it's not...
Not necessarily, it's year to year, so we had a small...
I'm saying it's, but it'll be available to you, but it's not, you haven't kind of earmarked it yet for a particular program or enhancement.
Well, for FY '20, we did. We, we used $4,000 towards support in math and English for all students and then we used, I think, $6,000 towards professional development in, in looking at our Portrait of a Graduate and Student-Centered Learning Activities. I'm not sure what we're gonna get in FY '21 yet.
So we try not to put something that we need because then run the risk.
Because you can't be sure it's gonna be there.
Right, right. At the elementaries, I will just say, we're using this, a chunk of the, each of the grants in the elementaries for additional responsive classroom training. So that's building upon what we did last year, but that's a, actually, it was a good timing because we want to do it again and that's a good source and use of those funds. And it was, it's a one-time thing in a way, so.
Do you anticipate there being any sort of looking ahead? Because I know that for Chapter 70, there was sort of a restructuring, that was in Chapter 70, wasn't it, was the restructuring?
State level.
The state level, yeah. So you think that going forward, it'll be similar to this year or is it still in flux?
If we, if we should only be able to, so interestingly, look, and I haven't been able to dig into all the data yet, we were not a hold harmless district, which I thought we would be, so we must have had something that tipped us over not to be because we got a little bit more of an increase than I anticipated.
Yeah, I did, yeah.
And Mars did put together a spreadsheet of all the hold harmless and we were not listed.
We were not on it, yeah.
We were not on it, so that was my indication that something...
Isn't it related to rural districts?
Yeah, but we're not, Dover's not, Sherburne is, but it had to probably have to do something that I had to look in our enrollment, could be our special ed number, something tipped us and we could have just been barely, but there was some factor that allowed us to get a little bit more than just the hold harmless amount, which is the $30.
Because I expected the 70 and 71 to be switched.
Yeah, yeah.
And so I was surprised.
So 71, if you look at what the governor's budget did for overall regional transportation is below what it was last year, so everyone takes their, their little hit on that, but I, I anticipate that one creeping back up.
That will creep back up, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes. No, just, this is so comprehensive. I come in with questions and you answer them. I really appreciate it.
I'll try to be on top of it.
Could you go through a quick and tell us where to put everything?
Oh, yes. So the summary of budget adjustments, if you go to your tab 2, I would put that in your front because that's, go to tab 2 and put that one on top.
Is that one? Just the first page?
I gave my students the assessment calculation, go to tab 3 and put that on top of your...
Thank you. I feel like you're teaching school.
Where is the one-to-one done?
So the one-to-one's gonna go in the back of 2, you'll see where the technology supplements are.
Back of 2, yeah.
Right, so put that in the back.
Thank you for providing this, Chris.
Yes, thank you.
And while you're back there, while you're in back of 2, you can add your summary of staffing and your summary of anticipated grants.
They'll be extra house door, flex block, you can extra work.
I'll hold office hours tomorrow between 4 and 6.
Yep.
And then your, your class sizes, I put enrollments.
Well, stick on this, enrollments here.
You can put it on the back.
That goes in four, isn't it?
That goes in four, yes. Enrollment in four. Your class sizes.
Can I just leave this topic now to bring down the mood or anything, but from the point of view of the town, we, I don't know if you're aware, we are collectively all with department requests, we are looking at close to $1 million over advisory guidance right now, over $600,000 over the guidance reserves, if you factor in the guidance reserves. So we, you know, we, we're looking at a projected tax rate if we were to agree to all of these requests of well over $20 per thousand. So we still have a lot of pressure points, at least in the town of Sherburne, and we're gonna be looking for help wherever we can find it.
Which, thanks for bringing that up because I did have some other little facts that I was gonna share with the committee. So just to put this in perspective, because, right, we all work with the town. So the two elementaries, the two local districts, actually are both requesting negative budget increases to the tune of $160,000 in each. So rather than asking for anything, Dover's is down $160,000, Sherburne's is down $160,000. A lot of that is being driven by the out-of-district cost going down, but at the same time, the two locals aren't asking the towns for any money to go towards their operating budget, which should help, at least if you look to the schools and totally help the schools. In addition, since we last met, Maggie and myself and Anna and myself have both met with the capital committees of each of the two towns and let them know that our plan is to fund your fiscal year 21 capital with region, with region funds so that we're not asking for anything on capital from either one of the two towns.
And we do appreciate that, we appreciate all of that. And that's just, you know, we are in a situation where there's a lot of pressure on us.
Right, right, yes, I agree, but I think that the schools in general are doing their fair share to help, to help everyone. So I think that's important when you look at your region budget, to know what that financial... So I think that's important when you look at your region budget to know what that financial constraints are for the two locals. And it just so happens that both of them saw significant decreases in added district, which means they're not asking for any budget increases.
Bless you.
Thank you, Dawn, as always, very, very helpful, very informative. All right, we've got now the midyear review of our RSC norms and beliefs. It was included in the packet and everyone should have had a copy. Does anybody we'll go through very quickly, but does anybody have any thoughts or comments to start with?
Well, I have some questions. Being relatively new on the regional school committee, so is this something that we review every year midway? I mean, I know we met in the fall.
Yes.
We should.
Yeah, so in theory, we're supposed to review it mid sort of midway through, just sort of a check in. How are we doing? Are there things that we feel like we need to touch like a touch point? We can also pat ourselves on the back, doing a great job, things that we might need to change. So that's really what this serves, just make sure we're kind of holding what we doing what we said we would do.
Got it.
I'd just like to add that Lynn did suggest that where we talk about no surprises, she thought that we should actually change that and have to figure out where that is.
Under how we communicate, number two.
Thank you.
Number two, yes.
We agree that we agree that there will be no surprises and she thought that we should probably change that to or add to the extent possible. Practicable. Practicable.
Yes.
That's what she suggested.
I would concur about that. I think that as much as I'd like to promise that we will never surprise anybody in any of these meetings, but you know, on the flip side, it is our only time to deliberate. And occasionally, information comes forward in the meeting and either you just sit on it and you don't ask a question because you don't want to make anybody uncomfortable and then you miss the I I think that we have to understand that we.
That is, I mean.
This is actually where we get our work.
It's part of our reality.
Yes, and I think that's kind of what we're all.
At least we're making ourselves aware.
I think that's what we're all thinking, but it's better to be more precise about it in our language, I think. Okay, so I have to say, I've never gone over them before midyear, so just really quickly. Under how we govern, this is sort of a discussion, do we feel like we are following what we said we would? What we would do? It's division of labor as we said it would be. Yep, okay.
Feel comfortable.
Feel comfortable with that. All right, great. How we communicate? I would like to just sort of say reiterate the first part, which is our responsibility to set the tone for the entire school system. And we will make every effort to promote a positive image of our school system. I think that's important to just reiterate. We'll operate transparently and respectfully, maintain confidentiality and respect open meeting laws. Because that's just really important. Feel like we've been working towards that. Yeah. And any comments on that part and how we improve?
Did you have did you catch the typo on four?
Nope, did not.
Does school committee create?
Will create.
Will will create?
Will create.
Will create.
Will create.
And does everybody have a copy of what of that calendar? I'm not sure that everybody does. I'll share that on our.
Of the school committee calendar?
Of the school committee, our list of what we do every month.
Is it in our in a drive and it was in one of our original packets and things?
Yes, just make sure that it's in the drive, yeah. Okay, great. I would say it's under communication, it's working okay. How the communication with the superintendent through the chair.
It's from our end it is, how was it from yours?
From my end, it's been it's been great, you know? People generally speaking, if people need to make me aware of something, they try to go through the chair. But I mean, if they run into me, they'll let me know as well, which is fine.
I have to say, I appreciate you all, I think have done a great job reaching out to let me know about things.
It's it's when things are intense that that having 16 school committee members can be more challenging.
Yes.
Triple E or something like that.
I would just also like to reiterate number six because that may come into play as the year continues, that you'll channel requests for information, parts and data through the through me. Just that people reach out, especially as town meetings approach or as elections approach.
I I think that the second part of that is important too is, you know, I don't think it's been a problem this year, but I've been doing this for a while and sometimes it does become challenging to make sure that when information's been requested, that when it gets fumbled back out, that it comes back out to everybody so that there's not some people in the know and other people not. And that that makes it really frustrating because if people call or they want information and you're like literally. So that's super helpful.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, thanks. And how we improve? All right.
We don't really have mentors, but as a new school committee member, I've felt very comfortable just asking.
I've actually never heard of that, but it's not a bad idea.
Oh.
No, a signed mentor as opposed to just by chance.
I had a fabulous mentor my first year and.
By chance, though.
No, no, no.
Oh, you actually did you actually did organize it.
I had Lori as my mentor the first year. I don't know if we kind of have fallen away from that this year with.
Well, I guess I'm not new new.
Well, I was gonna say, so yeah, so it's I think it's more because you're not new new.
Yeah, and I was and I needed that.
But I still try to like before every meeting, I try to reach out and contact and sort of say, do you have any questions? These are the important things. This is I think it's sort of that way, but I think you're right, it's more it's more informal with people who are have been on school committee before. Because you understand versus you and then Lynn.
I didn't I didn't have it back in the 1990s, I don't think. The chair sort of was, I guess.
Yeah, I think what's the clairgram?
Yep, clairgram model.
Model, yes. All right, so people feel good and comfortable about this?
Yeah, I think this is great. Yeah, I feel okay about it. I mean, I think that it's, you know, every time that we have an election, every time that we welcome new members, I I think that revisiting these is important because, you know, people join school committees and then you sort of learn afterwards like what a school committee member actually does and how it operates a lot of times. And so I think that these are really helpful to have written down and.
Yep, yep. All right, thank you. It was nice that we had a little extra time today to to get that to go through that. All right, so now we're going to go to subcommittee reports and we've got OPEP.
It's pretty brief, actually. Dawn did a great job in her report of summarizing what we say. But as as all of the members and the folks in the audience know, we were able to set aside an amount of $100,000, correct? $500,000, sorry. We've been looking at a lot of numbers this week. That we are going to plan to use to seed our OPEP trust fund. This is important because it will reduce the liability that we have to carry on the front of our balance sheet. Just doing that reduced our liability, I believe, from the end from 28 to 24.
That was from the cost share.
From the cost share.
Right, so we haven't felt the impact of the funding yet because we hadn't funded yet.
So that money sitting and part of the process for us as the as the subcommittee is to interview organizations to be plan administrators. And so that's the work that we've been doing this month. We'll meet and we're expecting to be able to select as administrator. All of the organizations we looked at and and worked with were wonderful groups. They came really prepared and had really impressive things to share with us. Our considerations and and each of them came in different ways with these things were experience managing OPEP trust specifically for regions and for other sort of multi entity groups like like we are. And all of our contenders have that experience and pretty deep experience. We also want organizations that are going to be able to help us either do it with themselves or have ways to help us set up all of the documents that need to be done to do this and to make sure that our trust stays, you know, in within compliance of all of the different laws and things that govern these these types of funds. And then besides choosing a vendor and choosing, you know, kind of what we're going to do, we have to provide two things, an investment policy, which we have to put together and draft and we'll be expecting to share with you next month, as well as a funding policy. So one of the elements of having this fund is that we have to commit to some funding policy whereby we will provide out of our operating funds, some kind of funding to this every year. And so Dawn is helping us to come up with a strategy that will allow us to provide a steady stream of funds, but you know, won't just sort of be right off the top of, you know, taking, you know, out of a library books or some other thing. And and so we're going to work on drafting those and expect to be able to share with you next month our choice for a plan administrator, as well as a draft of a funding plan and an investment policy plan that that we can deliberate on and hopefully vote to accept next month. And we're really excited about it, not just from the, I think, just not from the liability standpoint and the the elements that we've become a more financially stable organization when we've provided this, but also, you know, thinking about our retirees and, you know, their need and and our desire to provide, you know, reassurance that we are going to be able to fund, you know, all of the hardworking professionals and other staff members who work here who need health insurance after they retire and that we'll be able to pay for that and that this trust will set up that security. So we're excited about it for all those reasons. And thank you so much to Dawn because she's done a ton of the legwork to get these folks teed up, to make sure that everyone who's come for us to interview has been really an A plus organization. I wish we could choose them all.
Yeah, I know.
This is something the region has wanted to do for quite some time.
Yeah. And and thank you because really, as we sat in for each of those meetings, you know, we were kind of waiting to kiss a frog. And everyone who came in front of us, really, there's a lot of players doing really good work. And so for us, the considerations besides finding make sure obviously people being qualified is making sure that the options that we have for investing fit are what what we need. And also looking at the underlying cost structure because they are structured differently. And so we want to make sure, you know, no matter, as we all know from investing in our own money, no matter what kind of return you get on your investment, there's fees associated with that. We want to make sure that we are minimizing the fees and maximizing the stability and the return of the money that we invest. Thank you. Yes.
Two questions. Is is this truly going to be a a trust or is it a plan?
It's a trust. It has to be like that. The whole thing is very structured by like a thousand different laws into a structured trust.
Which you already voted.
Yeah, you've already already established the trust.
And then once the it goes into the specific plan, there's other underlying documents that protect the money and put it into a into like, you know, that's all you can use it for.
Well, yeah, and we don't have access to it for anything else.
Correct.
Right.
Uh, second question is around benchmarking. Do we have information about kind of where we are compared to other similarly situated districts?
I mean, I I mean, Dawn can maybe speak, but one of the things that's interesting about interviewing these different organizations is that they're actually doing a lot of this work for other similar districts. And so when you look at their presentations, they're actually able to share with you, you know, sort of what other places like us have in terms of OPEP trusts, what kind of funding they already have, what other strategy what strategies. I mean, it's kind of all over the place, to be honest. I I mean, I felt like looking at what other places are doing, like goodness, we really need to be doing this. But also felt confident that we have a very workable, manageable plan.
But in most instances, it's it's the town itself that sets up the OPEP trust. Because we're regional, we are our own municipality.
But I was looking specifically at the region.
There's a lot of regions.
So I was like what we were targeting when in looking at, you know, comparable groups is other places that are regional school districts. And what are they doing?
And their client list is broken out that way.
Right, and so it was really helpful to us because we could say like, oh, you have these municipalities and and, you know, oh, you're doing, you know, the the mass port or whatever, but oh, look, you're also working with the regional school districts because we had come with a unique set of, as you know, you know, other, some of them work with collaboratives, which have a very similar structure in terms of how they have to provide the health insurance. So you're able to sort of see what other places are doing in that presentation. You know, it may I left these meetings feeling like, gosh, this is something we really ought to be doing.
And so we're not going to be getting far out ahead of where.
Oh, goodness. Oh, no, no, no. We'll be joining a party that has started long before we got there.
Wow.
And there's still and there's still a good percentage that have to arrive.
Right, because there's also people not on that list.
What I think is propelling more and more municipalities to get involved is the fact that GASP has now made it made you have. It's brought it to the forefront, yeah. And a lot of it's just, you know, it's, you know, actuarial numbers are based on the assumptions. So it's 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 a I'm not gonna say it's a made up liability, but overnight, we've seen how ours can change because they've changed one assumption. So I but it I think it's we would never get to a point where we have overfunded. But what this is going to allow you to do is if a year where there are budgetary issues, we could pull from that fund to pay some of our pay as you go expenses. So it's another little stabilization fund that you have access to for that. They said we could pay our actuaries out of it, we could pay, you know, it can be used for anything related to OPEP. So and as you remember, Dover's already put, you know, more money than we're going to put in our on our behalf and one of and their and the stabilization fund for that. So the goal is, and I and I mentioned I didn't circle back, where I do think we're going to see some additional positive savings in the retiree line item, all those savings we're going to keep and that's that's going to be our our funding vehicle is what we're was what we're hoping. Because each year, this year, we took 5% off of our plate onto the retirees. 5% next year and continuing on until we've got 20%. But if we can retain that money, add the increases for the premiums, but keep that money in there, we're not asking the towns for any more money. So we're using that action that we took with our retirees to help fund. So it's actually dollar for dollar going. So it's coming out of not in our pocket, but out of their pocket, but the savings that we get are going on their behalf and to the.
And that's the thing for me, you know, having the opportunity and also the responsibility to sit at the table with the retirees last year and to say, you know, you counted on when you retired this percentage and and we need to, you know, take that back, which, you know, it's what we need to do because it's what we need to do is give good governance to our towns because it put them at parity with the town employees. And by earmarking and hoping to put that money toward the trust, I feel like we are keeping good faith with the retirees that we're not in fact taking the savings that we took back and like, you know, spending it on something else and then having to turn around, you know, 20 years from now and say, uh.
No money.
We can't support you and, you know, or something, you know, because then you get into realities of people needing care when they retire. And, you know, we have to be responsible about it, but we also have to be responsible about it as human beings. So I feel like this is some a way that we can do both those things.
So is the thought that we're funding in for in FY21 and it's the 21,000 that was?
No, that's.
That's different, that's not related.
So right now, out of the, I think, 745,000 is what's sitting in the budget for fiscal year 21 for retirees. That's probably more than we're going to need. So what you're going to see us do is I'm probably going to take that number and I'm going to split it out between this is what I need for pay as you go and this is what we're going to do for OPEP funding.
Okay.
So the number's in there and and what we may do then is if we want to get to a goal number, say 100,000 and I could I can carve out 50 or 60 out of there and we want to do the 100,000 and then we're going to have 100,000 in '22 because we're going to have the other 5% potentially, that's where we could potentially use a little bit of E and D. Because right now, your budget is built with no use of E and D. And we did that because we're paying for capital.
It's good, yeah.
But there could be a little flexibility if we wanted to get to a target number for funding that we could supplement what I what we can carve out of the budget. Technically, say I come back and I say I've got $40,000 of savings from this year's retiree, which would technically then fall out to your bottom line and go to E and D. We could take that 40,000, couple it with whatever I have and that could be your funding for fiscal year 21.
So you can make it be as flexible, it doesn't have to be an amount, it can be through the process.
Yeah, so you they really want to see a mechanism and they want to see you stick to that whatever you set aside. So if you say you're going to fund, they're going to see that you fund and that's going to help your discount rate.
Got it.
Be a better discount rate.
You can't just like your funding policy can't just be whatever's left over at the end of the day.
Right.
But you do a flexibility a little bit depending on how we write that policy.
Right, there is no requirement to fund on an annual basis if something ever happened. But I think we're in this unique opportunity where we've got some built in numbers. It's not going to make our budget increase. But that will help us, yeah, come up with a good number to fund on an annual basis.
Great, thank you for your work. Appreciate that.
It's been a pleasure, really. Thank you, thank you, Dawn.
That is good, all right. All right, please make sure you look at communications. Scott Kellert's report's always interesting, so please look at that. As Dawn has mentioned, the meeting on the 25th will have.
The auditors.
The auditors, thank you. And the next round of budget to prep for the meeting on the 26th, which everybody has in their calendar.
And that will be at Dover Town Hall.
At seven. All right, any other things to add? I hear motion to adjourn. Thank you. All right, on favor and we're adjourned. Thank you.